With the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation by Councilman Oglesby.
May we bow our heads, please? Our Father, who art in heaven, tonight I ask for a special prayer for Cashay Peterson. I ask that you hold the family of Cashay in your loving arms and comfort them during this time of grief and sorrow. Let us, as a community, embrace the family with all the love we have to give and let them know we support them with our heartfelt condolences. Let us also pray for the healing of Tiana Lenores and that her swift recovery be guided by your grace and mercy. At this time, I'd like to share with you Psalms 23. The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want; he making me lie down in green pastures. He leaded me beside the still waters; he restored my soul. He leaded me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walked through the valley of the shadow of death, I would fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Thou anointest my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving on, I have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion and second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you very much. We have no special presentations, so we jump right into our ordinances final reading. Madam Clerk, please start with five A.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to lift conditions one and four and leaving conditions two and three of ordinance number 12259 from properties located at 7415 and 7419 Ziegler Road and 1707 and the rear portions of 1711 Joiner Road, more particularly described here in subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Ledford. Move to approve. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties located at 1707, Part 1711, Part 1715 and 1719 Joiner Road, more particularly described here in from R1 residential zone to R4 special zone subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Ledford.
Move to approve, sir.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, C, please.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 8360 Petty Road, more particularly described here in from R5 residential zone to R3 MD moderate density zone subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Ledford, followed by Councilman Gilbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, move to approve.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to lift conditions of original site plan and ordinance number 1226A from properties located at 1412 and 1420 Crawford Street, more particularly described here in.
Councilwoman Burz. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you very much. E, please.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone property located at 7353 Lee Highway, more particularly described here in from R4 special zone to C2 commercial zone subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Burz.
That should say District 6, and I move approval.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, his name. So ordered, F, please.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, so as to rezone properties located in 300 Block of West 45th Street, more particularly described here in from M1 Manufacturing Zone and R3 Residential Zone to RTZ Residential Townhouse Zero Lot Line Zone subject to certain conditions.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you. That takes us to ordinances on first reading. Madam Clerk, 6A, please.
In ordinance, men Chattanooga City Code, Part II, Chapter 11, businesses, trades and occupations relating to short-term vacation rentals within any zones allowing residential use and providing terms and conditions for the issuance of short-term vacation rental certificates.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a sort of a last minute, some things we need to take care of. I'm going to ask for a one-week deferral on this item to February the 27th. This is form of motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for deferral until February 27th on this item, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In ordinance, closing and abandoning a portion of the unopened Ridgeway Avenue off the 6200 Block of West Ridge Road as detailed on the attached map subject to certain conditions.
Move to approve.
Aye.
A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Department of Youth and Family Development and initiated by the Department of Economic and Community Development to execute an agreement to exercise option to renew with Chattanooga Housing Authority and substantially the form attached for a term of one year for the use of the gymnasium at Cromwell Hills Apartments to operate programs for youth, young adults and families on the property located at 3940 Camelia Drive on a portion of tax parcel number 137EA001.
Councilman Gilbert, followed by Councilwoman Coonrod. I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you. B, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the Department of Youth and Family Development and initiated by the Department of Economic and Community Development to execute an agreement to exercise option to renew with Chattanooga Housing Authority and substantially the form attached for a term of one year for the use of the Sheila Jennings Wellness Center to operate programs for youth, young adults and families on the property located at 1201 Poplar Street on a portion of tax parcel number 145FA002.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, C, please.
A resolution approving an economic impact plan for the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Development Area.
Councilwoman, or Councilman Oglesby, sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we do vote, I just wanted to point out a couple of changes that we have been able to make to this project. One, to the economic impact plan itself, and I'm just going to read it so that hopefully that'll help any confusion. The proceeds of the tax increment financing would be used exclusively to pay for, pay all or a portion of the cost of acquiring and developing the site for the MLK Boulevard extension and public infrastructure improvements. And then our resolution on the next item has been changed to reflect the same language.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion and second, there's no further comment. It was a pleasure with the council. You're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you. Madam Clerk, D.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Evergreen Real Estate for a TIF loan related to the extension of MLK Boulevard to the Riverfront and the Blue Goose Hollow Trailhead.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second. No other lights, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you. E, please.
A resolution authorizing the interim director of Human Resources to enter into an agreement with Industrial Organization Solutions, IO Solutions, for the purpose of administration of police captain promotional testing for an amount not to exceed $19,269.
Councilman Gilbert.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. So ordered, thank you. F, please.
A resolution authorizing administrator for the Department of Public Works to enter to an agreement with Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. for professional services relative to contract number W16022101 for the equalization basin and blower replacement improvements project, a consent decree supported project for an amount not to exceed $2,44,192.
Councilman Henderson.
Move for approval.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. G, please.
A resolution authorizing Corbin and Courtney Geary, property owners, to use temporarily the unopened city right-of-way between 1210, 1218 and 1300 Hamilton Avenue for the purpose of improving the unopened right-of-way for public access as shown on the maps attached here to and made apparent here of by reference subject to certain conditions.
Councilwoman Burz.
I move that we defer this for one week since the district representative isn't here, and I know he'll want input.
So we're moving to February 27th?
Yes.
Very good, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. All right, that's the last item on our agenda, which takes us to purchases.
Good evening.
Good evening, Bonnie.
Tonight we have three purchases for your consideration, the first two being on behalf of the Public Works Department, first being a new blanket contract for protective footwear to be awarded to Centos, an estimated annual amount of $90,000. Next, a blanket contract renewal for new and replacement paving and concrete to be awarded to TNT Concrete LLC in an estimated annual amount of $200,000. Finally, on behalf of the Transportation Department, we have a blanket contract renewal for preformed thermoplastic marking materials to be awarded to Flint Trading, Inc., an estimated annual amount of $40,000.
Move approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. Thank you. So now, we will move into other business, starting with Councilwoman Burz.
Other business? Or committee reports? I don't have any other business, I do have a committee report. Is he messing you up?
No.
Is he? Huh?
It's all good.
It's all good.
Any other business.
So, I have no other business.
Anybody, anybody, anybody. Nope. All right, Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you. I just want to go answer to the anybody request, since I earned the right to be councilwoman. I would like to appoint Juanita Dr. J. Lottman-Claus to the YFD Human Service Advisory Board for District Nine.
That's in form of a motion.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, I've got a couple of lights, I'm assuming they're on other business.
They are.
In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, his name. Thank you, Councilwoman. Takes us to Councilman Oglesby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This past Saturday, the 100 Black Men of Chattanooga held its sixth annual African-American History Challenge Bowl, and the finals went down between Tyner and Brainerd, and Tyner won the competition. I'd like to acknowledge Kennedy Gale, sophomore, and Keandra Allen, sophomore, who won that competition, and I'd like to compliment social studies teacher Neil Prigmore as their coach. They invested a lot of time and a lot of energy, and they did a phenomenal job representing their schools at this competition. The great thing about this competition is this team will be going to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in June to compete at the national championship of the 100 Black Men of America's International Convention. So, let's give them, not here, but let's, for the record, give them a round of applause, because this was no easy task. They had to study a book called Looking Upon African American, Life Upon These Shores, Looking at African American History, 1513 through 2008 by Henry Louis Gates. So they literally had to study African-American history from 1513 to 2008, and they did a phenomenal job doing it. So I'm looking forward to them representing our city and our school at their championship in June. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ledford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just want to remind everybody, this Thursday, February 22nd, at East Brainerd Church of Christ, which is located at 7745 East Brainerd Road, we will be hosting our joint community meeting with Sabrina Smedley, the commissioner from District Seven in County and District Four City, which is myself. It starts at 6:00 PM, and we'd love for everyone to come out, and we will have a multitude of guests from the county and the city giving updates on projects that affect both County Seven and District Four City. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. I have applications if you are a homeowner and you in need of minor home repairs, you can take a couple of applications with you if you know any neighbors, community members, church members that you would like to be a part of this program, you can get your application.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I see no further other business. Takes us to committee reports, we'll start with Councilman Oglesby.
Chair, next, on February the 22nd, the Economic and Community Development Committee will meet to get an annual update on where we are with our current housing pilots.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting did meet today. We heard a remarkable presentation by the Chattanooga Design Studio, Mr. Eric Meyer, about the South Broad Development Plan. It was filled with fantastic renderings, and it gave a very clear picture of how really just incredible that area can be, and we really appreciate the work that's being done there. Mr. Bridger gave us a update on the Area 12 Plan, and also, we talked about flood and slope development in the near future to try to get ahead of some concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Henderson.
No report.
Councilwoman Gilbert. Councilwoman Coonrod. Councilwoman Byrd. Councilwoman Burz.
Yes, sir, we had a Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting today, we discussed the things on today's agenda and the items for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If there's no further comment, that takes us to the time in our meeting where we recognize persons wishing to address the council on non-agenda matters. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? One, two, okay, go ahead and come up to approach the lectern, three. Mr. Attorney, would you read the rules, please?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Smith. If you are interested in addressing the council, you will only be recognized at the microphone. You have five minutes unless the council provides for additional time. Cannot address the council on matters that are outside of its jurisdiction, you can't address the council on matters that are on the agenda. You can't personally attack or denigrate others, and you can't use any vulgar or obscene language. That, please, move forward.
Thank you, sir. Just give us your name and start your five minutes.
May I approach?
Yes, sir. Yeah, he'll, he'll pay us. Thanks, sir.
My name is David Toulis, I'm editor at Nugonomics.com, and handle a business show and a law show at 92.7 FM Nuga Radio. What's passing down the row of city council members is my administrative notice. It's a notice, the reason for which is a personal racial reparation of my race to the black race. It is a long research that I've done, and it is a review, it is a simple rehearsal in 20 pages of the law touching transportation, the use of the road by car and truck and people in them. And I'm citing in detail US Code 49, Tennessee Code annotated 55 and 65, and all the relevant case law that, in a brief way as possible, explains a dilemma. The dilemma is that we have come into a grave abuse of common people. The controlling law that this report gives description of is about the origin of transportation and transportation regulation. It is in the public interest that the state of Tennessee regulates transportation in the city, and it does so for the health, safety and welfare of the people, because transportation is, it is about profit, it is about risk to the public, it is about heavy trucks, logging trucks, dump trucks, stray body trucks, courier services, all people making a profit on the people's asset, which is the road. The law is very clear, the roads belong to the people, the state is a steward and trustee of same. Transportation, in a nutshell, is the use of the public right-of-way for profit, carrying goods or people for hire is some kind of carrier. Everyone who's involved in transportation, subject to those laws, is involved in business. But what about people who are private, private users who are not involved in that business? Councilman Dr. Burz, for example, is not involved in that business, Mr. Gilbert, I don't believe you are either. What about you? You're not in the business of carrying goods and people for hire. What about you? This notice is a labor, as I say, of journalistic research, and it allows for grace in local economy. It allows Chief Roddy to inform officers that some users are private, users of the road are private, and should be, and should not be molested for using the public way for a private pleasure. Many private people do not have licenses, they cannot afford insurance, and not being able to use the road is a civil death sentence, because on the road they face harassment, they face arrest and criminal charges. Starting today, they can appeal to the law, as I'm describing it here, they can, as I lay it out here, they can appeal to administrative notice. They are innocent, they are non-criminal travelers, they can seek protection under the law, as I'm gathering it together here for the benefit of the legal minds here, seek protection and restitution in the event they are injured. You have been notified, and the city officers cannot plead ignorance, now that notice has been given, that if they injure, abuse, harass, or falsely arrest innocent private users, they do face, they do face a tort claim against them. Roger Taney, who wrote the Dred Scott Decision before the war, had, he wanted slaves to be enslaved for good, and the opinion in, I think, 1858 refused manumission of slaves, and he didn't want black people to be free, he didn't want them to be able to have meetings to go to and fro freely, and he didn't want them traveling on the roads, quote, "without pass or passport and without obstruction." They had to be licensed to go anywhere, the master's name, when and where, when he was back, what the job was, it was all part of a license that that black slave had to have to be anywhere in, on the road. And that, of course, was intolerable for Mr. Taney, intolerable at all. Mayor Burke has a vision for Chattanooga in which there are local solutions to national problems such as the abuse of transportation law against minorities, against immigrants, against the ignorant, and against the poor. People who do not know how to defend their rights are ground up in our judicial industrial complex, and they fill the jail. Many people are there and they can't get out, they can't make bail, they're too poor, and they are, in fact, though they may have been licensed at some point, they are, in fact, out of sorts with the transportation law, and they have revoked, suspended, expired, what have you, and they are, under that law, kept in bonds, as it were. This proposal, this notice, is a catalyst for a return to police practice, for reform, excuse me, it is a catalyst for reform of police practice. It sees that within law, there is levity and grace, the law actually requires it, because as I said, there's a distinction made between travel and transportation in the statute and in the opinion. And, thank you very much, do give it your close attention.
Good evening, I'm Teresa McCauley, 1615 Reed Avenue. I have just read the Times Free Press online article that the South Broad Street Plan suggests that a new city TIF district be created. It would be to help finance parks, walkways, stadiums, which was written in plural, and other public improvements. I participated in the South Broad Street planning process presented by Design Studio, and heard earlier this afternoon their presentation to you, the city council. This appears to me to be a good plan. I am curious, however, that a TIF was never mentioned during the planning process in August and September of 2017, or during the Design Studio presentation today. As a citizen, I'm always concerned when I don't think I'm hearing the whole story about how citizens' tax dollars are to be used. I believe in full transparency, and it is the most positive way to go. My second issue focuses on the affordable housing already in this area. I'm concerned that steps might not be taken to safeguard these families with every encouragement that they remain within the entire development. To be a great city, we must include a diversity of housing with persons of mixed income in our city neighborhoods. Please remember that mixed-use housing is not necessarily mixed-income housing. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley.
Hello. My name is Cora Lanier in a little bit, 3109 Taylor Street. I'm pleased to have each of you standing in the gap for all Chattanooga neighborhoods and the city as a whole. I want to especially recognize my councilperson, Demetrius Coonrod. Our boy's neighborhood is shared between her and Councilman Byrd. I've come today for my word. However, I may be in error, as my reference may not be about my word, but the word of someone else. But just in case, as mean, I want to be, I want to clear up a point about what I said in reference to people in the West Side Projects and the Riverfront. During an IDB segment on the TIF, I spoke and said, "I truly don't believe walking to the riverbank, the river is anywhere near the top of the list of desires for people who live in the West Side Projects." I went on to say, "I understand that they are more concerned with the safe walkway to a nice nearby grocery store. Therefore, the people who live or rent in the newer downtown developments would be most interested in walking their dogs or riding their bikes to the river." I did not say the blanket statement that people in the West Side do not want to go to the river, okay? My point was that but for the new residents in the upscale housing, other residents in the lower-income housing would not have an opportunity to a new walkway to the river. In other words, I was saying, the principal reason for the MLK expansion to the river is not being done mainly for the low-income residents in the West Side. However, there was a picture and a statement presented from a low-income resident used to confirm the rationale for the MLK expansion for them to walk to the river. It was clear to me that the statement from ATF and the statements I made were not in opposition to the MLK expansion, to me. I don't remember anyone saying it was a bad idea to expand to the river. It seemed to me that the ATF was more of a matter of the TIF not being the proper use for that, and as for me, it was about equity in the city of Chattanooga and the enormous amount of blight in Districts Eight and Nine. Anyway, as I said in the beginning, it may not be my word I'm coming to clear up, it may have been someone else that said the statement, people in the West Side don't want to go to the river. And I wanted to say that in some of my conversations with Councilman Byrd, I remembered a lot. He said, "Ms. Cora, there are a lot of things people just don't understand about how things work. I still don't understand how this beautiful city does not find a way to build equity for all neighborhoods and to the financial planning and visioning." Again, I'm pleased to have each of you standing in the gap for all Chattanooga neighborhoods and the city as a whole. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
I'm here, I'm hoping in the right place. I resigned at twenty-four-twenty Union Avenue in the Ridgedale area. I just recently built a...
What's your name, sir?
Big pardon?
What's your name?
Otis Rump, senior. So I was saying, I just recently built a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar duplex in the twenty-four-hundred block of Union. In getting that building permit, it was required to have real parking only. So in saying that, I went to the city, I called the three-one-one the moment that I started building so they could prepare the alley. But the alley is such bad shape, I can't even get anyone to come look at the apartment for rent because you can't get through the alley. The pothole is so deep that it bottoms out on the frame when you come through. I spent four hundred dollars last month in concrete just to get a portion of the alley so I can get peoples in to view the apartment, and nothing is being done. I plead with you all to do something to that alley so I can obtain rentals in that rental property. There's been a heck of an amount of time, I've been complaining for nine months on getting something done to that alley. And it's not by choice that these peoples got a park. It was, it come from the city planning, there must be real parking. So it's no parking in the front, so they have no other option. And that's the first thing that I've been presented with when I showed the apartment. Well, how we gonna get up in here? So I would like for you all to consider doing something with that alley.
Thank you. May I ask for just a moment, please? You said you were on Union Avenue?
Yes.
Do you know where that, that's you? Councilwoman Coonrod, would you mind speaking to him after? And I saw Mr. Bailey back there kind of maybe tilting his head to see if he knew where the area was, and I'm sure he can get that figured out for us. Thank you, sir.
My name is Andrew Adams, and I purchased three buildings in the beginning of twenty-seventeen... Sorry about that. I purchased three buildings in January of twenty-seventeen in the Rossville area. It's right at the intersection of Twenty-third Street and Rossville Boulevard. Two of the properties are, or buildings, are on Taft Avenue, which is in between Rossville and twenty-four. And I just, you know, is there a regulation on tire storage?
Yes.
Okay. There is a business that fronts Rossville Boulevard that has, that I don't really know what the meat and potatoes is of their business, but they have an excessive amount of tires stored in the back of that property, which shares a fence line, which should be an open alleyway, but the alleyway has been fenced in by this business to store the tires on and other junk cars. And I have no problem with somebody making money. And I don't, I've tried to talk to the guy, and I don't want to disrupt his business. If the tires are of value to him, I would think he would store them different, but it makes a, an atrocious mosquito issue that is coming. And I have rented out a bunch of the buildings and have my office and, you know, warehouse and one myself. I, like the previous gentleman, have called three-one-one time and time again to try to get something done and just haven't seen any action whatsoever. So I don't know if I'm in the right place or speaking to the right group of people, but if there's anything that could be done, it's the address for the business in question is twenty-three thirty-five Rossville Boulevard. And I can't have a war with the guy, you know, so once I went over there and asked him to do something different, and he told me to leave, and that's it, you know, okay. I'll just try. I went, I spent a thousand dollars on a backpack blower, like you see with the bug people, and bought chemicals, and was out there spraying and thought how ridiculous this is that I'm having to spend all this time and money when probably the reality is he doesn't want to spend a dollar fifty a tire to have them chewed up. He just piled them up back there. It's overgrown. It's a real health hazard, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. I've got the address. I'll make sure it's addressed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Coonrod.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Cora, thank you so much for the clarity. I appreciate that. But I guarantee you that we want the same thing, everybody on the council. We want equity for everybody, and we want it shared across the city of Chattanooga. It may look like at times that certain areas, well, most, majority of the time, we'll just be honest, that it's just everything is going in a certain area, so for the downtown area. But we have to mobilize in our own districts and get people together and stop being so divided and separate and work together on simple things so we can get things done in our district. Because as long as we're bickering over where we need to place a tree, we can't even come to terms to even begin to talk about what kind of housing, affordable housing in our units on property, or to even make the streets look nicer if we can't even agree on the simplest things. So Sharita and Donna with Economic Development, they're most definitely doing their part to make sure that we're identifying areas that where we can begin to see some work flourishing in that, in that community. And so we're not going to let them sleep on that. So if it's whoever is working in the community, it's going to take a collective effort of everybody. You're a great person in that neighborhood to spark that energy and making sure that things are getting done and making sure that we're doing our part on the city council to advocate for that. So it is, we're going to be in the process of the BFO. So whatever ideas or suggestions that you would like to see for in District Nine, that you would like to see in the budget or in the district, share those thoughts so we can make sure that we're advocating for those things to take place. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. We are adjourned.